Operating Budget Topics, Stop Discussion and Finish with the Capital Budget Update. And I'll actually brief the end driving at 8:00. The next slide is the Budget Timeline. I'll pause here for a moment. The budget process is a continuous year-round. As we execute current funding, we're also planning the next year's budget. Compromises will be especially critical to the formulating our next year's budget as we navigate through the financial uncertainty of each department. We close out one year and move into the budget hearings in July, the final budget hearing and September. Hey. Do you have a note from this Escobar? We need to talk to our audio panel. Okay.
Yes.
So Dr. Mullins, what are we waiting on?
This is the six. And we don't know if it had something to do when they changed to the digital mics. Mr. Francisco is unable to hear. Okay, just being said on the audio in his room. So he has put a temporary mic up there to see if it will pick it up. Can we give it a try?
Do you know if we need to go back and start up in the beginning or can Ms. Lasinski pick up where she was?
I think it might be better if we go, just for transparency, to go to the beginning. But can, do you mind if I make sure that Mike can hear what I'm saying right now? Let me go check.
Let's try it now. I didn't hear anything. It's not working.
All right, I'm going to test it. Just record and then I will tell you.
No, Cindy, you're not on mute right now.
Cindy, you are not on mute. Cindy, Cindy, you're not on mute.
Can you hear?
They talking?
Yeah.
I can't hear anything. They have to talk, but I can't hear anything.
Okay. Mr. Francisco says he cannot hear anything. So I'm not certain what you want to do.
Ms. Escobar, do we know, can, what changed since the last time that we successfully did this and is there a way to go back to that?
Ken, let me work with Mike and I'm going to, we'll just have to hold for a minute, okay?
Okay.
When you look at the next slide, the mental health assistance at the state level also was increased by $25 million and our portion in Brevard was $637,000. Lawmakers passed language which increased the employer rates for the Florida retirement system. The FEFP calculation does not include specific revenue sources to offset these costs, which is estimated to be $230 million for school districts. Again, I'll say the FEFP calculation does not include specific revenue sources to offset these costs. Our estimated portion is $5.2 million. Now we're going to move into Brevard specific and how the committee's report calculations affected us here locally. The first slide for BPS FTE, on the face of it, you'll see that school enrollment continues to grow each year. When you go to the next slide, however, when you look at the growth by type, you see that of the 417 growth projected, 645 is for charter schools or a net loss of regular FTE of 228. This negative growth in traditional schools compounds our financial challenges.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
So can you explain the difference between the 2019 and 2020 FTE number? You know what I mean? We're pulling from the third FEFP calculation to the current conference report. Can you explain that process a little bit? How is it that we use that number and everything else? Don't mind.
I guess I need to understand your question again.
Sure. So going to, you've lifted up this slide that you're on right now, which I'm trying to look and see. It's the next slide, slide number 10, that I had on my presentation. I'm looking, there it is, right there.
Okay.
So we have third calculation there from 2019 to 2020 at 64,628. And then we, there's figures from the FEFP conference report, which are supposed to be for next year, at 64,439. Can you explain how that conference report, they come to that number? How do they estimate that number to be?
You mean the total number, the 73,689? Or how the charter numbers?
Sure. So yeah, I mean, they're all the same. So they are estimating in 2020, 2021, that we will have 73,689 students. And that we will, we're basing all of our estimations based upon an FTE number. I'm just asking the question of how it is that they come to making that, you know, that assumption, that's all.
Ms. Lasinski, this is Dr. Mullins. I think we have Karen on the line, but Karen, you can clarify. I believe the conference report projection enrollment is a result of our projections that we send to the state. Is that, is that, can Karen confirm that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the third calc is based on the FTE that was done in February of this current year and the projection for 2021 would be our projections that we sent to the state through our enrollment committee.
Actually, sir, the third FEFP calculation is from January. We are, so it has October actual FTE and an estimate of February's FTE. We are currently waiting on the fourth FEFP calculation that will have both October and February actual FTE. But to Mr. Susan's question, yes, the projections are our numbers, not the state's.
Perfect. That's just all. So we, as a group, come up and say, these are what our projected estimations are going to be. And then we send them to the state and then we base our budget based upon what our numbers are. That was all. I just wanted a clarifying question. Thank you so much.
Okay, no, thank you. These numbers do not address enrollment may look like when we return to school, however. We may lose more students. We are not entirely sure what the school will look like when we return. Some parents may be uncomfortable sending their children back to school. Others may want to continue to homeschool or explore other virtual options. So that is another concern and I think Dr. Mullins wanted to provide additional information on this slide.
Yeah, I just, I think the slide is pretty clearly depict trend that we've been seeing other than a year in the traditional. So the traditional column represents our traditional 83 schools. And the total at the far right represents total enrollment for the entire district. So traditional Brevard public schools sites have been experiencing some steady decline in enrollment over the last several years of almost 1,100 students. And yet, at the same time, we've been growing as a community in enrollment. However, charter schools have continued to increase and grow. So the, just about the transfer of new growth and the declining enrollment for Brevard schools has, the primary share of that has gone to charter schools. And there have been some additional private school growth, particularly as a result of scholarships that have come from legislation. At the bottom of the graph, you can see what a revenue impact is on a snapshot basis. So it does not reflect what the cumulative impact of revenue is year-over-year based on the enrollment. But if you simply take the either enrollment decline or enrollment growth at a moment in time from 2014, '15 to projected enrollments of 2021, that demonstrates what revenue impact would be for the coming budget.
Okay, on the historic millage rates, as you can see in the required local effort column, Brevard's millage rate has steadily decreased over the years and our proposed millage for 2021 is 3.707. As discussed previously, this reduction causes us to lose potential revenue or buying power that could have gone towards schools and educating our students.
Ms. Lasinski, could you, could you go back to that millage slide for just a second?
Sure.
Could you, for our public, explain what that really means for them? So, for example, we've seen a 2.16 decrease in our millage since 2012. Um...
And now I wanted to go into the legislative session. And again, this is at the state level. And these are the highlights from the report. The required local effort millage was reduced by 1.155 mils. This has been the trend because of the healthy growth of statewide property values each year since the Great Recession. Lawmakers reduced the RLE millage rate to limit the revenue generated from this source. This is a conscious effort to ensure that revenues received are not greater than the previous year or that they remain flat. Reducing the tax burden on homeowners. That said, this practice reduces potential revenue or buying power for K through 12 purposes. The base student allocation was increased by $40 for each weighted FTE, which really isn't that much. Normally, a good amount of increase for a base student allocation would be around $200. And then the total funds per student, again, as I talked about in the previous slide, was 2.4% with the lion's share of that money going to teacher salary increase allocation and student FTE growth. The best, brightest bonus program was repealed and used the previously appropriate revenue to help offset the new costs associated with the teacher salary allocation. The intention of the teacher salary allocation is to assist school districts in the recruitment and retention of classroom teachers. Eighty percent of the allocation will go towards bringing up the minimum base salary to at least 47.5 or to the maximum achievable based on the district's allocation. We are evaluating how close our allocation of 12.6 million will get us to the 47.5 goal and what the 80/20 split will look like here at Brevard. When you look at the next slide, the mental health assistance at the state level also was increased by 25 million and our portion at Brevard was 637,000. Lawmakers passed language which increased the employer rates for the Florida retirement system. The FEFP calculation does not include specific revenue sources to offset these costs, which is estimated to be 230 million for school districts. Again, I'll say the FEFP calculation does not include specific revenue sources to offset these costs. Our estimated portion is 5.2 million. Now we're going to move into Brevard specific and how the committee's report calculations affected us here locally. The first slide for BPS FTE, on the face of it, you'll see that school enrollment continues to grow each year. When you go to the next slide, however, when you look at the growth by type, you see that of the 417 growth projected, 645 is for charter schools or a net loss of regular FTE of 228. This negative growth in traditional schools compounds our financial challenges.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
So can you explain the difference between the 2019 and 2020 FTE number? You know what I mean? We're pulling from the third FEFP calculation to the current conference report. Can you explain that process a little bit? How is it that we use that number and everything else? Don't mind.
I guess I need to understand your question again.
Sure. So going to, you've lifted up this slide that you're on right now, which I'm trying to look and see. It's the next slide, slide number 10, that I had on my presentation. I'm looking, there it is, right there.
Okay.
So we have third calculation there from 2019 to 2020 at 64,628. And then we, there's figures from the FEFP conference report, which are supposed to be for next year, at 64,439. Can you explain how that conference report, they come to that number? How do they estimate that number to be?
You mean the total number, the 73,689? Or how the charter number?
Sure. So yeah, I mean, they're all the same. So they are estimating in 2020, 2021, that we will have 73,689 students. And that we will, we're basing all of our estimations based upon an FTE number. I'm just asking the question of how it is that they come to making that, you know, that assumption, that's all.
Ms. Losensky, this is Dr. Mullins. I think we have Karen on the line, but Karen, you can clarify. I believe the conference report projection enrollment is a result of our projections that we send to the state. Is that, can Karen confirm that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the third calc is based on the FTE that was done in February of this current year and the projection for 2021 would be our projections that we sent to the state through our enrollment committee.
Actually, sir, the third FEFP calculation is from January. We are, so it has October actual FTE and an estimate of February's FTE. We are currently waiting on the fourth FEFP calculation that will have both October and February actual FTE. But to Mr. Susan's question, yes, the projections are our numbers, not the state.
Perfect. That's just all. So we, as a group, come up and say, these are what our projected estimations are going to be. And then we send them to the state and then we base our budget based upon what our numbers are. That was all. I just wanted a clarifying question. Thank you so much.
Okay, no, thank you. These numbers do not address where enrollment may look like when we return to school, however. We may lose more students. We are not entirely sure what the school will look like when we return. Some parents may be uncomfortable sending their children back to school. Others may want to continue to homeschool or explore other virtual options. So that is another concern. And I think Dr. Mullins wanted to provide additional information on this slide.
Yeah, I just, I think the slide is pretty clearly depicts trend that we've been seeing other than a year in the traditional. So the traditional column represents our traditional 83 schools. And the total at the far right represents total enrollment for the entire district. So traditional Brevard Public Schools sites have been experiencing some steady decline in enrollment over the last several years of almost 1,100 students. And yet, at the same time, we've been growing as a community in enrollment. However, charter schools have continued to increase and grow. So the, just about the transfer of new growth and the declining enrollment for Brevard schools has, the primary share of that has gone to charter schools. And there had been some additional private school growth, particularly as a result of scholarships that have come from legislation. At the bottom of the graph, you can see what a revenue impact is on a snapshot basis. So it does not reflect what the cumulative impact of revenue is year over year based on the enrollment. But if you simply take the either enrollment decline or enrollment growth at a moment in time from 2014, 15 to projected enrollments of 2021, that demonstrates what revenue impact would be for the coming budget.
Okay, and the historic millage rates, as you can see in the required local effort column, Brevard's millage rate has steadily decreased over the years. And our proposed millage for 2021 is 3.707. As discussed previously, this reduction causes us to lose potential revenue or buying power that could have gone towards schools and educating our students.
Ms. Losensky, could you, could you go back to that millage slide for just a second?
Sure.
Could you, for our public, explain what that really means for them? So, for example, we've seen a 2.16 decrease in our millage since 2012. But what does that mean for the average taxpayer?
Ms. Belford, if I may, I'll jump in here and give it a try. And this is, this is Mark Mullins again. So a property owner in Brevard is assessed RLE, the required local effort, the property tax, along with the discretionary local effort and the capital outlay. Capital outlay, you can see, has remained constant over the last 10 years. If the board recalls, a couple of years prior to what is shown here, capital outlay actually was a 2.0 millage assessment for capital, but it was reduced by the legislature to 1.5 mils. When the property, as we've experienced in our economy, property values have been at a steady increase. So property values have been increasing over time. So if a required local effort millage were to remain the same, for example, if we were to go to 2015, 16, the RLE was 5.027 mils. So if your home was assessed at $100,000, 5.027 mils would be $502.07 of property tax value against the home. If that home increased the next year to, say, $110,000, a 5.027 mil would generate additional revenue based on the increased value in the property. However, the legislature the following year said, we're not going to raise revenue for K-12 education as a result of property tax. So we're going to set the millage at a lower rate to generate the same revenue that was produced the previous year. So you can see that that millage impact from 15, 16 to 16, 17 was a reduction to 4.718 or a reduction of .31 mils. So essentially, the homeowner with that $100,000 home paid no additional taxes towards K-12 education from 15, 16 to 16, 17. That rollback process has been occurring since 2013, excuse me, has been a, I think we're going into the sixth year of, 2012, 13 was the first year that that occurred. So it has been a compounded effect of continuing to reduce the required local effort as property tax, as property values have increased. The cumulative impact is a little over 2 mils. So homeowners have, if you will, their property tax assessment for K-12 education has not increased for the last several years.
Hi, this is Tina. I have a couple of questions on this slide if I can.
Ms. Belford?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, Dr. Mullins or Ms. Losensky, does that rollback rate, does that affect all properties or just homesteaded properties? That's question number one. And then number two is kind of a question slash comment. I would like to see another column and make this chart even longer that shows our revenue in dollar amount compared to that percentage. So, because it seems like technically we've brought in X, and if they've rolled it back to X, it would be X all the way down for all of the, that's fluctuating, we would still have X, 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 not X plus one, not X plus a million. And so that's something I would like to see, and I think that the public might be interested in seeing also.
Ms. Neskovic, yeah, that's a good question or, you know, good request. And you're absolutely right. Essentially, the revenue that we generate locally that goes to Tallahassee and is put into the K-12 revenue bucket for the state, that contribution has not changed over time. So, and I, we may be on a subsequent slide, I don't remember. If we, if we assume for a moment it were $50 million, I'm sure it's much more than that, but if it were $50 million, our local contribution was that in 2013, 14, in 2019, '20 would still be $50 million. The millage rate would have been adjusted to keep the revenue the same. And then I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the first part of your question. Did you repeat that?
Yeah, so you're saying it was exactly the same. Can someone send us or update this chart or something at some point with those numbers? I mean, I'm not urgent, but it's something I would like to see, just to see if it really is exactly the same. And then the first question had to do with, is this for, because there's a lot of people around here that have their homesteaded property and three or four rental properties. And I get calls where they say, my home is fine, but my three rental properties, if you do this, will go up, you know, exponentially. And then I have to raise rent, which is also a problem that we have in our community. So I need to know if that rollback rate is just for homesteaded properties.
It's my understanding that the rollback is applicable to all properties, keeping in mind that when a, when a Florida resident homesteads their property, they earn a discount on what the millage is assessed against for that. So for a homesteaded property, the property value is reduced, so therefore the millage is less for the same full valued home that is not homesteaded, if that makes sense.
Right. And then there's a cap on what your homesteaded property can, how much it can go up. But I think that's not for schools, right? Is that just for other taxes or is that for our capital?
I think, I cannot answer that question. I'm not sure if anyone else, if, Ms. Losensky, do you know the answer to that question? If not, we can certainly follow up with the board.
Yeah, we'll have to answer that question for you and get it to you.
It's probably over here in, like, say, capital, it's always 1.5. So that would be going, so maybe that's their home, because there's a cap there. They'll say 1.5, which is a higher amount as the property value goes up, but maybe the non-homesteaded keeps climbing.
Yes. Can I speak for a second? Because I can, I can try to explain it. Basically, those homestead exemptions are at 3% and that because they rent their properties out, they do not have a homestead exemption. The RLE funding comes straight from the state, which they control and they keep it flat. So in, respective to the RLE funding, they're not going to see an increase. Where they're seeing the increase, and they may be getting confused about, is our local effort, both through our capital and other areas, that has increased based upon that the state has no control to hold back. Where we see, I think, if we can get a number, and it's something that's not addressed here inside this budget, is last year's mil, as compared to this year's mil, we increased revenue between, I think it was 2 and 3 million dollars from last year. Do you guys have that answer and if, that number? And if I, if I have to explain it right, basically, it can be found in the discretionary local effort in our capital, but it's also in some of the other things. So our millage that we have locally has actually increased by a couple of million dollars. Is that correct?
Are you saying that for just capital, Matt?
No, it's embedded in some of our other things too. But in capital, for sure, it has increased.
Hmm.
So when they say that their, when they say that their money is increasing, they are 100% correct. And this slide that we're looking at currently is kind of a, it's showing what we should be getting had the RLE not been rolled back. But in general, yes, we receive more money, more funding every year, both in capital and other areas, based upon a millage rate that has been increasing. And it was something that Penny and I went around and around about, if you remember. But we've seen an increase between 2 and 4 million dollars every year in local taxes based upon it. And that's because it's not with the RLE, what they're going after. That's not controlled by the state, but it's actually local.
Mr. Susan, I might, and I could be wrong, we can certainly follow up and confirm that. I'm wondering if you may be referring to the capital, we are allowed to do our capital budget on a 96% property tax captured budget. So we can, we can start our capital budget based on a 96% collection rate of property tax. If, however, once property tax collections have occurred, if we, if Brevard collects at a higher rate than the 96%, then we get the benefit of the 1.5 mils against the property tax. Last year, you're correct, we did see an increase, we budgeted for X dollars for the capital budget based on a 96% collection rate. And I believe the collection rate actually came in at 97. something percent, which was a generation of, I want to say 1.2 or 1.4 additional dollars we had not originally budgeted. And then we brought that back as a budget amendment to the board. Is that perhaps what you're referencing or was it something else?
No. The 96% just claims to the 96% of what the actual millage rate that is collected. So whether it's 30 million, 40 million, 50 million, you're only allowed to collect 96% based upon budgeting. And that's what Penny and I were talking about. And she was 100% right. For budgeting purposes, you're only allowed to do that. No, we see an increase locally in our millage. It has increased between 2 and 4 million dollars over the last five years, both in capital and other areas. And then we collect the 96% on top of that. So when you're looking at the numbers, when I was explaining it before, I mean, it was 38 million, then it was 41 million, then it was 44 million, then it was 46. You know, I, my laptop is, the screen isn't working. I had the old, every one of them, I could have given you direct numbers on them. But that's, that's where, when she's saying that, when Ms. Neskovic is saying that the millage, these people are saying that it's increasing, it is increasing on them. They are paying more taxes. It's just that the RLE gets rolled back. And that's where, that's where I think our argument is, is that if you're going to make an argument, we are, we are not locally funded the way that we should be because these people are not paying all of the taxes that they should be. That's what I think the argument to this, this historical millage rate does, and I think it does a good job. Had we been funded the correct way, it's not that, it's not that we are not receiving less or flat, but it's, we are not receiving the amount of money that we need. And it's, and if you look at 2.16 mils, that's inwards of almost $90 million a year extra that we would be receiving inside of our funding. And that's what, that's what I think is the main argument to be made here, is that we have, traditionally, the RLE has hurt us every year. But if you look at this year, if we would have said, okay, 2.16 on top of what we normally get, this is how much, it would be inwards of $90 million plus. And that's what's not fair. And I think that this is a great slide for making that argument, that we are not receiving the amount of funding we have. But in the same respect, Ms. Neskovic, they are paying more taxes because the millage rate goes up, which we receive both from our local and for our capital. That's all.
Yeah, Mr. Susan, I understand you're, you are correct. The property tax is going to increase because the capital outlay millage is remaining constant, but property values are increasing. So that first example of a home went from $100,000 value to a $110,000 value, the 1.5 mil assessment against that property would go up because the property value increased to $110,000. So the capital budget revenue is increasing over time. That is correct.
Yes, sir. And also, what a lot of those people, Ms. Neskovic, need to remember is that when the property values go down, that their taxes actually go down also. But one of the things to remember is that a lot of the people that make that argument, that they are renting out their properties, that we are increasing their taxes, they are also renting out their properties as investments. And the reason that they're, that they're able to make those investments is because their property values go up. And so when their property values go up and they're going to make an investment out of it, that's part of why we have a tax base to pay for a lot of our schools. So thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Susan, you've made the statement twice that the values have gone up somewhere in the operating budget. And so that, this is what I want to clarify, because you're not pointing to exactly where. We all agree that the capital outlay, 1.5, when the value goes up, the taxes go up. But you've alluded twice that taxes have increased on the operating budget, but you haven't pointed to exactly where. And so I'd like you to tell me exactly where you think that's going up in the operating budget. And maybe it's, if we saw that last column I've asked for, maybe it would show that they're not rolling it all the way back and that's where it is. But I don't, other than that, I don't see where, where that would be happening here.
Absolutely, Ms. Neskovic. And I apologize. My laptop actually went down where I have the figures. I would love to give those to you tonight at the school board meeting so that I can be succinct and to the point. But as of right now, I don't, I am looking literally at the screen that we have in front of us with no, with no pack, no, no backup on any of my data. So I would love to provide that to you later. But I do know, and this is something that we've been going around with, is that our, our local income, it goes up, right? And we do, they do pay taxes on that, but the RLE is killing us because it is not where it needs to be. And anybody in this county that says that they think that the RLE is a fair thing, it's just not fair. It's not, and we, that's all.
I just want to make sure we're being very clear, because there has been times in the past we have thrown out, oh, there's 3 million extra dollars there. And no exact proof of where that is. And people in the public here, one of us say that, and they assume we have extra money somewhere. But no one ever shows exactly where it is. This year, if there's 3 million dollars somewhere, and one of the board members wants to say there's 3 million dollars somewhere, I won't want to see that 3 million dollars before you tell the public we have that kind of money laying around somewhere.
Sure, I agree with you 100%. And part of it is, is in the CAFR files at the end of every year. At the CAFR files, you can see the increase in each one of them. So tonight at the board meeting, if you would like, I can provide those numbers to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Belford, if I can jump in really quick with just one clarification?
Yep, Ms. Campbell.
I think we need to remember that some of the increase, Matt, or Mr. Susan, sometimes switches up the word rate with like the millage that's collected. And the rate has not increased, the rate has decreased. But sometimes the total amount that is collected has increased or that we're given by the state. Some of that has to do with growth in the housing market. So even though, you know, the rate has decreased so that we're collecting the same amount of taxes on paying people, we are having, we've had a housing boom. And so we, we may have, some of the increase that has come in income and revenue from the state has been because we just have more people to do, to collect taxes from. But I would also say, Ms. Neskovic, the extra column, some of that is going to waver because it's, my understanding from what Dr. Mullins said, from the way the process works is, yes, we're, this money goes to the state, but that column is not necessarily what we're receiving each year. It's not necessarily going to be reflective of what we're collecting here because then the state puts it all in the big bucket and they give back to us what they deem, you know, whatever they choose to give us, which includes the district cost differential, which hurts us, and some other things that help us. And so, you know, it's not necessarily going to be a nice Excel spreadsheet over there if we could add the extra column, because the state is changing what we're receiving based on their FEFP formulas and giving each district, you know, according to what they deem that we need.
You are correct, Ms. Campbell. Thank you for those clarifications. And if I can, just circle us back and try to get us back on track. That growth is a big part of the difference. But my, my initial question that Dr. Mullins addressed, and I just want to make sure it's clear for our public, if I owned a house that was valued at $100,000 in 2012, 2013, I would have paid $809 in taxes for schools. If I own a $100,000 house in 2020, I would pay $595 in taxes to support schools. And I think that's where it gets lost when we get into the minutia of the millage rates and the required local effort and all of those things. The bottom line is that our community is paying less on their property taxes than they would have paid five, six, seven, eight years ago toward schools. And I think that's an important, important consideration for us all to understand because we hear people say that their taxes are going up. And yes, the taxes go up for a lot of different reasons to include an increase in property values. So I just wanted to make that point clear. Unless there's any additional discussion on that at this point, I will turn it back over to Ms. Losensky to get us back on track.
Okay, thank you. So on this slide, it shows, I'll pause for a moment again. This slide depicts Brevard's overall proposed revenue increase for 2021 based on the committee's report. Note, our total revenue change is 14.2 million. This slide compares Brevard's FEFP from the final conference report with the third calculation of the FY 1920 FEFP. We broke this table out by restricted and unrestricted to high
We broke this table out by restricted and unrestricted to highlight our budget flexibility. And then you can see, as, as you look through here, you can see the best and brightest was rescinded, you can see where the teacher salary increase allocation was added, you can also see where mental health received, um, a pretty good increase. And again, the potential, uh, the total potential funds that we received is 14.2 million dollars.
Ms. Losinski, if you can go back to that slide one more time, I just want to bring to the board, so then you had, you had referenced, uh, if you look about halfway down the top half of the, the list, you see the funding compression allocation, that was a considerable reduction, which is, uh, goes back to the earlier slide of our, uh, how we've compared against other districts. So we did, uh, experience almost a million dollar loss in that revenue this year.
Yeah, in that categorical, I, I spent quite a bit of time looking at that to try to understand where that came from, and again, because this, they looked at prior year's funding, and we are closer to the state average, and the other thing that happened too is on that categorical is the state did not fully fund that categorical, and when they kind of ran out of money in that categorical, we didn't get as much. So, um, previously, we had the, the 1.9, but because the, one, we're closer to the state average, and two, because the state ran out of additional money to fully fund that categorical, we're only going to receive the 9.17 this year versus the 1.9 that we received previously. And this next slide, uh, we take the 14.2 million that we have of revenue, and then we subtract out our restricted funding, our other categoricals, um, that are restricted, and then we find that our net funds available is actually, um, 8.3 million. And then when we take the 8.3 million and we subtract the growth for charter schools and the increase in Florida retirement employment rate, we find ourselves, uh, 2 million, uh, we, we find ourselves with a 2 million dollar shortfall. And again, as Dr. Mullins talked about previously, an enrollment problem is also a money problem, so the charter schools, um, do cost us additional money, um, from our overall budget. Given the committee proposal, we face a 2 million shortfall in absence of any new investments and strategic priorities or changes to funding based on COVID-19 impact to our state's financial This slide depicts additional known expenses that we'll have cut in the upcoming year. And that brings us to our challenges. When we look at FY 2021, we have to address the realities of the enrollment decline that Dr. Mullins addressed, as well as the increase of our FRS. Ultimately, ultimately, these errors will drive us to budget cuts in order to address employee compensation and our self-insured medical plan shortfalls. The COVID-19 implications are still unknown. What schools could look like next year, what enrollment could look like, and what our state's budget can afford are all very real concerns that we have to, that we have to address. We expect state economists to meet, uh, I'm sorry, to make new projections sometime in May. As we consider all these challenges, we must actively, actively manage our overall financial Dr. Mullins, I don't know if you wanted to add to this slide?
Sorry, I was muted there. No, uh, Ms. Losinski, that was, that was granted. Right, thank you.
Because this next slide is, uh, as, as we move into cutting budgets for the next year, we wanted to review cuts that were taken over the last five years.
If I can just take a moment to provide a summary, um, the, the budget reductions impacting our operational budget, uh, go back to 2015, 16, and you can see that, uh, it's been categorized by year as well as by type of operational, uh, impact. So back in 15, 16, we did make some transfers from the operating budget to the capital budget that are allowable by law, obviously. Uh, that included, uh, the transfer of property insurance, uh, to capital funds of 5 million dollars. And then you'll see in the middle column, personnel and staffing, that came as a, as a, uh, that came as a result of, of eliminating, uh, budgeted reserve teaching positions through analysis and consideration. And then in addition, uh, that year, additional, uh, district level budget cuts to the operating budget were made of 1.1 million, or an overall operating budget, uh, impact of 6.5 million dollars. As you move down each of those columns, you'll see that, uh, what the transfer to the capital budget has been during that period of time, as well as of 11.2 million dollars, the additional reduction of personnel and staffing of 9.5 million dollars, and a total operating budget reduction of about 6.1 million dollars, totaling, uh, 26.8 million dollars over the last five years. And I share this, you know, I know by and large the board is aware of these efforts, and they've all been for, for good and, and right reasons, uh, but it does begin to challenge the areas in which we can continue to make additional budget reductions moving forward.
Okay, so next step, we have to be proactive and posture the district for 2021 fiscal uncertainty and a healthy recovery. We, we are identifying our non-recurring revenue that includes COVID-19, uh, reduced expenses and savings, that's things like our utilities and the diesel fuel that we didn't use, utilities that weren't used in the schools, um, programs that we did not continue because of the closure of the schools, travel, things like that. So we're gathering all those expenses or savings, and then we're also closely monitoring federal assistance, the elementary and secondary emergency relief fund. Um, it's something that we're monitoring very closely and posturing to make sure that we can get the maximum allocation possible. The funding will be based on Title I funding, and, um, the state should be sending something to us, uh, so we can apply for funding, um, within the next 30 days. We're also taking a look at our lapse to see what other, uh, one-time funding may fall to the bottom, but we, what we're doing is to make sure that we can find any one, not fund is, find is not a good word, but that we're looking for all our expenses and, and funding that comes available, that we can fill, um, a one-time gap next year to help us get through the year. We're also evaluating potential reoccurring revenue, we're looking at our staffing models, our operate, our operating budgets, we're reviewing our contracts and our programs to make sure that we're efficient in doing the things that we need to do that are top priority, um, to make sure that we're educating children. Uh, we're already working with the cabinet to identify potential reoccurring budget cuts across departments, and we plan to come back sometime in May with our proposals.
Ms. Losinski, before you move on from there, just very briefly, um, on the, on the federal emergency relief fund, I've had some constituents reach out with some questions on that, um, and I, I know that we don't know a ton about how much we can expect, what it'll be used for, those types of things. Do you have any additional clarity, or are we still kind of in a, you know, waiting game to see what exactly that's going to look like?
Well, so the, the funds are based on last year's Title I expenditures, um, and that was 17 million for us, it was 2 million for the charter schools. So just listening to some of the CFOs across the state, their estimate is about maybe 17, uh, I'm sorry, maybe 70% of that amount, um, that's something that we're hopeful for. Um, I believe that amount could be 10 to 12 million, but we still need to be able to, um, explain to the state how we'd use that money, and I don't think we would have a problem doing that, because with the expenses that we have already gone under with, uh, laptops and hotspots and, you know, all the things that we did, the cleaning, the reimbursements for all the, um, expenses, we've already incurred because of COVID-19 since March 13th, and then the things that we need to do to prepare our children, um, and to stand schools back up, salaries that need to be paid, I, I don't think we will have a problem meeting that 12 million dollar threshold. So we're, I'm, I, I, I'll use the word hopeful, I know in the military you always say, hope isn't a strategy, but I'm hopeful, and I, I, I believe that 10 to 12 million dollars is a reasonable amount of money to think that we will get, and that we'll continue to take a look at that.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that, uh, hope is not a strategy reference as
And then keep in mind our guiding principles as we develop our budget and consider reductions. Protection of an excellent education, protection of an effective workforce, maintain the fiscal strength of the district, and protection of the taxpayer interest. I think I'd like to pause here to see if there's any more discussion, um, about the operational budget.
Any board members have any questions or comments regarding the operating budget? Right, Ms. Losinski, it looks like you did such a great job that they have zero questions at this point, if you want to move on to capital outlay.
Well, I need to do some more homework on the millage, that's for sure. Um, so capital outlay, uh, capital outlay budget, uh, the next slide, you'll see Bivard's tax assess, assessment history. It's interesting to review Bivard's tax assessment history, beginning with FY 2008 and '09, which was the last year of the Great Recession. In the three years following, you will note three years of double-digit declines in the assessed property values. For fiscal year 19 and '20, we anticipated our assessed property values to be 40, uh, 45.5 billion. The most updated tax projection of 48 billion for 2021 were provided on January 6th at the state's revenue conference. We expect to receive the certified taxable values from the property appraisal in June, and the assessed values along with projected revenues will be updated in the upcoming tentative Revenue estimates, this slide provides an estimate of our major sources of capital revenues, beginning with local capital improvement tax levy, or LCI. Our estimated, uh, 2020 school taxable property value, like I said before, was 48 billion. As you know, we lever, levy our capital revenue at 1.5 mils, and our budget is recorded at 96% collection rate, which translates into an estimated of 69.1 million in revenues for the district. The second major source of capital revenues is our sales surtax. Last year's estimate for 2021 was 23 million, which covers the remaining referendum period ending in December 20. So we will only receive six months of the revenues versus the 12 months we have been accustomed to. The FY 19 revenue reported for 12 months was 47.4 million. Our early estimates of the sales surtax revenues are based on historical collections, so the 23 million has not been adjusted to account for the current economic changes that we are experiencing today due to COVID-19. This slide continues to depict our major sources of capital revenue. We estimate 14.2 million of collections and impact fees. The revenue levels for FY 20 are expected to continue at the same level for FY 21, assuming there is no decline in projected new housing development. Uh, the public, the public education capital outlay, or PICO, revenues are allocated by the state from proceeds of the gross receipt tax on utilities, and these, uh, and these funds go straight to the charter schools. The capital outlay and debt service revenues are derived from the first proceeds of statute auto, auto license. So these are all things I've learned very recently, but we, uh, this is how we did some of our revenue for our capital.
Ms. Losinski, if I can interject, just to, for point of your clarification on the PICO dollars, the $0 reflects what, uh, Bivard Public Schools receive for traditional schools. I believe there is an allocation for charter schools in PICO dollars, but, uh...
Yes, actually, yeah, last year, or actually, um, this year, they re, received 3.6 million, and the previous year, they received 3 million, but the, but we here at, um, Bivard Public Schools did not receive any funding, so the, uh, the PICO dollars are going to the charter schools, and they, it appears that that's a trend that will continue. So circling back to our LCI, this slide depicts how the revenues are allocated. As previously shown, the FY 21 anticipated revenues are 69.1 million, 35.3 million is allocated to pay our debt service, and we transfer out 15.2 million, uh, to our operating budget to cover facilities maintenance and property insurance. This leaves us with a remainder of 18.5 million to cover major capital projects, and this is actually, um, 2.4 million increase compared to last year's funding for capital projects.
Um, I have a question, if I may, Ms. Belford.
Of course.
Uh, it's more, is this hand on here? It's either from his hand or maybe Dr. Mullins, I think. Uh, the, we at one point in one of our workshops talked about the cost, um, like the going rate per square foot to maintain buildings, of what it should be, industry standard, um, and then we were able to compare that back to what we have as far as capital funds coming in. Uh, that's something I'd like to look at again, if you guys don't know it off the top of your head, I don't blame you, I mean, I think it was probably over a year ago we discussed that, but that's some information maybe to follow up, I'd like to see if you can.
Ms. Daskovich, this is Sue, just off the top of my head, um, the range for the industry standard would put us somewhere in the 45 to 70 million, depending on, you know, what percentage you wanted to, to use, there's a variety of different options. Um, so that's, that's about, um, the number that I've been using in terms of the various presentations I've done about facility needs, is probably in the 45 to 70 million.
That's actually really helpful, so at the very low end, just to maintain the buildings and facilities that we have, it's 45 million a year at the very bottom end.
Plus, yes, ma'am, and there's, there's different factors that are, that compose the industry standards, things like just maintenance, uh, maintenance and renewal, um, planning for replacement, those types of things, so that's why the, the numbers vary, but that's about where it lands for Bivard based on our square feet.
Is this physical buildings, or is this also field and such included in that number?
Physical buildings.
All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If, if I may, Sue, before you go, um, what, uh, what is the annual, I, I don't remember if it was on a previous slide, the surtax revenue that you have... I, I don't remember if it was on a previous slide, the surtax revenue that you have been able to utilize for, uh, for maintenance and facilities as well? Do you know that figure by chance?
The surtax revenue has been 43 to 47 million annually.
What portion of that has been for maintenance facilities?
For facilities?
Yeah, because it's not the whole, it's not been the whole quarter.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, we've been using, it's about 79% or so, 80%.
So I just, I, uh, uh, the 18.5 million that is estimated for 2021, you'll see in a moment, it, it's broken down by, that's to take care of all of our capital needs from facilities to transportation, uh, to educational technology and so on. Uh, I, I, you'll see in a moment that Sue's portion for facilities is in the single-digit millions of dollars. So, uh, significantly below what the minimum that is required. The surtax is assisted in meeting that need and, uh, but if, if the board recalls, back when the surtax was passed in 2014, the estimated accumulated deferred maintenance was, uh, right around $720 million. Um, the surtax revenue has certainly been a tremendous assistance in addressing that deferred maintenance, but, um, it's not been caught up through the life of the surtax, which is projected ahead, well, was originally projected ahead before COVID-19, potentially 250, 2, uh, 260 million dollars. So just add some additional perspective to the conversation.
Hi, one more question if I can. The maintenance transfers of 10.3 million, can you, I know that's some capital employees, right, that are, but what else is in that exactly? That's from the operating budget, but what does that, do we have a more detailed list somewhere of what that covers?
Um, Ms. Lesinski, this is Sue. I'll, I'll take a first stab at that. That covers, um, our maintenance teams work on certain project numbers that are eligible expenses for LCI, and basically it's maintenance expenses relating to things like plumbing, electrical, HVAC, kind of the standard, um, standard maintenance functions. It does not cover grounds maintenance. Um, Cindy, you or Joanne may have more specifics on exactly what's eligible and what isn't, but, um, I would say it, it is covering a majority of our maintenance activities.
That's people though, mostly, Sue?
It's people and us and, um, equipment.
Thank you.
Okay, so we convened a capital planning committee earlier this month to develop a capital allocation proposal to meet, uh, to best meet the district's needs. And you can see the team members on one side and the priorities that we used when we, um, met to prioritize the funding of the 18 million that we had for projects.
Can I speak real quick, Ms. Belford?
Of course, Mr. Susan.
Thank you. Um, in the past, and Ms. Belford, this may be a question for you or Dr. Mullins. In the past, we've set up a capital planning committee budget meeting where we discussed both the board's initiatives along with the, um, school district's initiatives. Are, is this what that is, or do we have another meeting coming where we discuss those things? Or can you kind of give me some guidance as to the process of how this is going to play out? Um, we established a process last year where we had a meeting where we put in our requests, they put in their requests, we've workshopped it. Is that coming, or can you explain that process, please?
Mr. Susan, you're going to see in just a moment what the committee has proposed, um, the recommended expenditures. The board will have an opportunity to review it, and then follow up with, uh, Ms. Lesinski if, uh, any additional considerations are, uh, are being proposed. You may, um, so you'll see in just a moment. It's the breakdown of those, uh, items, some that were funded, some that were not funded, which I believe is, you'll be familiar with from previous years.
No, and I, and I reviewed those, and I appreciate that, Dr. Mullins, for that explanation. What I was asking for is, is there part of this process where the school district will sit down with the, and, and kind of speak to what they're, what they would like to see funded, some of the programs that we've seen inside of our, and, and, you know, some of the projects that we may have inside of our districts, um, or other districts. Uh, that process was put in place last year, but are we going to do that, or is this, um, what I'm seeing here is, is the school district is proposing what they feel is the right way, the funding source, which is great. Um, what we did last year was, is we had a meeting where we then presented what we saw out there that we needed to be funded also, um, and then we collaborated and figured out what was best. Is that not going to happen this year, or is this just, um, is, is that part of the process? A plan for that?
This is the preliminary, uh, process. Uh, we can add additional discussion if that's the direction of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll pause here so you can review the division request for the committee's recommendations. Um, with the finite budget, you have to make difficult choices, and I believe the committee did an amazing job coming together, prioritizing based on the, the district's highest priorities, um, and to be able to bring these recommendations to, to the board.
Um, Ms. Sinti, this is Katie Campbell. On this second slide of the division request, can you, um, there's this one line, I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
Oh, number, line 30, on the locker room, there, there was 450,000 not funded. Is that we're doing one school and not the other school, or is it each school gets the AC, but maybe not at the same level? What's, um...
Um, I think I'll have to...
I can answer that.
Sue?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Ms. Campbell, there are two projects in the request. One is O'Gally at 450, and the other is Rockledge at 200,000. So given the constraints of, of the capital fund, we felt like we would at least try to get one of those projects done this coming year.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak, Ms. Belford, at your request?
Of course, Mr. Susan.
So I'm looking at the priorities of the capital planning committee or the safety, health, and security needs of the district. Um, and what I'm looking at is, is that we decided not to fund the air conditioning at Rockledge and O'Gally High School, um, which I would make an argument that is probably on the top of the list when it comes to safety, health, and security needs, over bucket trucks and some other things that I see on here. Is there anybody there that can explain the justification behind the thought process of not funding the air conditioning locker room as opposed to some of the other things that I see on here?
Mr. Susan, I can take that. This is Sue. Um, so again, we, we looked at sort of the overall picture of needs across the district. We are funding, recommended funding the Rockledge air conditioning system. I do have a design for O'Gally High School, and we did get a, a recent price on that that's a little over $400,000 that just came in this past week. So, um, we are prepared in the event that we have resources available to, uh, to execute that project. But as we did with the, um, with the gymnasium AC projects, we phased that in over several years, and so we felt like this was a start at that initiative, and we would try to pick up the next project, uh, the following year.
And I, and I agree with you 100% with this hand, as far as, and I appreciate the forward thinking as far as going out and getting quotes and everything else and making sure it's there. It's just, when I look at this and I, and I, and I see you go inside that locker room, and it's almost 90 degrees, you have kids that aren't dressing out for PE, or they are, they're just jumping in between, they're not participating to the level that we need them to. Um, and we talk about the health and safety. We've made it a district initiative across this district to have the air conditioning in this district taken care of. And these are schools where you have schools throughout the district that have air conditioning inside of their locker room, and these are schools that don't. And it's an equity issue along with the safety and health, I feel. I think it's really, I, I think it's a safety and a health issue when you have kids that are running around at the, if, if they are participating in the level that they're supposed to, and then they go into a locker room that's almost just as hot as it is outside. And I think that as a district, I truly believe in, in myself, is, is that before I forced those kids to run into all of those, those locker rooms with no air conditioning, I couldn't see myself funding some of the things that are on here. And I think I've, I've made this a point for the last two years, um, and I've sat back while we've said we would take care of them and we would, we would make it a point to, um, fund these projects. And when we come to a point where we see some of the issues that are on here being funded, and we don't fund the actual air conditioning, which has been a high priority in our district, um, and you're talking about the safety and the health and the security needs of the district, I, I, I differ with the opinion of this, this committee. Um, and I appreciate everything that you're doing, but I, 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 this will be one of the points that I make in the next discussion that we have on this capital. So thank you, Sue, very much.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just also, just a reminder that this budget is based on the 96% budget requirement, and we have at least for the last few years received additional, uh, the collections have exceeded the 96%, making available additional revenue, which would be added to consideration moving forward. Hopefully that will continue to be the case this year.
And I appreciate that, Dr. Mullins. I, um, I really do. That's also the conversation that we've had in the past, and I've seen funding come in for different things, and we didn't, we decided not to make it a priority to do that. What it comes down to for me, when I'm looking at this overall as far as, as the different projects on here, I see that we have a, uh, air conditioning that is not in one of the locker rooms, but we as a district have made it a priority that instead of putting that air conditioning inside that locker room, to purchase some of the things that are on here. Um, and when I say that we may have some, when I hear that we may have some funding coming in because we're going to increase, we're going to have the money come in on top of the collections, that's great. But I think that the priority list should be that these air conditionings are taken care of, and they're, and they should come before scissor lifts and bucket trucks and, and, and some of the other stuff that I see on there. And I know those guys, I know they need these things. But when you're sitting there and you're turning around and you're saying that we're not going to fund air conditioning, which was one of our, our priorities inside the school district, over some of those, I, I, I have extreme issue with that. Thank you.
Okay, the final slide lays out the capital plan year by, um, the capital plan year by type in one chart. We project a 5.7 million fund balance for LCI. We anticipate that all the sales surtax will either be spent or committed by the end of FY 2021. Impact fees will accrue, accrue for future expenditures related to growth in student stations. And finally, the other category, which includes revenues such as fuel tax revenues and capital outlay and debt service, these funds will be utilized as projects come available that meet the district guidelines. I'll stop here for any more, for any comments from Dr. Mullins or the board.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a point of clarification, those figures that are shown there are in millions of dollars.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Lesinski, I think you did such a great job again that they do not have any questions at this point in time.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I will congratulate Ms. Lesinski on getting through her first budget workshop since she has joined our team. She clearly did a, a great job and a lot of work went into it, and we thank her for, for all of that, as well as her team who helped her put it together. At this point, I will ask Chris Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and her team to provide us an update on athletic fees.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. I am going to, uh, take control of the desktop here. It's going to take me just a second. And if you guys will let me know when you see, uh, our first slide there, I'd appreciate it.
We've got it.
Awesome. Um, I, I feel like I need to start off this conversation by saying, uh, two things. One, it's intimidating to be talking about budget after that budget meeting, so, uh, I don't know if this was really for timing on our part. But, um, the second thing is, the dollars reflected in this PowerPoint are not reflected in the millions of dollars. So we can, we can rest assured that that is not the case. Um, so I want to just let you know that Bill Harris is, is on here with me. Bill, can you do a sound check real quick?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Awesome, thank you. So, uh, what we're going to do is just a, a really quick review of a, of our previous athletic fees presentation. Uh, you may have some questions going back to that. We didn't include all the slides, so, uh, Bill, Bill will be here. He has all of those details sitting right in front of him, so he'll be able to answer that. But you guys had some questions from our last presentation that we want to address a little bit, and we want to make a, a recommendation for how we think we can move forward with some of the, with some of the additional fees that we're going to see this year. So at, at the last presentation, we talked about the fact that the MCOA, uh, well, actually, the FHSAA has increased the amount that, um, officials around the state can charge per game. And so our officiating organization, the MCOA, uh, is looking to raise the fees. We are in negotiation with them right now, but we wanted to give you an idea of what the expenditures were for the past couple of years, to give you an idea of what they are going to be in the future. So this slide just talks about, you know, basically, if you're looking at 2018, '19, the last year that we have full data, looking at approximately $480,000 in officiating fees. Uh, as we go into next year, um, this is our estimate for what it's going to cost for us, it, with, with the allowable raise in officiating fees. This is the max amount, so I should say that. Uh, this is the most that they can charge us, and this is for every game allowable. You'll notice between here, uh, $480,000, and here, the $661,000, if you actually did the math, there's, there's a gap between what you might assume we would have made, uh, we would have been charged for last year. And that's because not every school and every sport plays the maximum allowable games. And that's going to be something important that comes up later in conversation. Uh, we know that there are teams that, um, you know, if, if the season allows 25 games, uh, they play 25 games, um, even if the minimum is 15, right? We also know that there are some that if the minimum is 15, they play 15, uh, and they don't go up to that maximum range. So the estimate that you're seeing there, that is the absolute high number. It is the most amount the officials can charge at the most amount of games that, um, every sport can play in the district. That making sense to everybody? I'm just going, I'm just going, keep going. So this is one of the questions that came up last time, kind of the, you know, what do they bring in, what do they, uh, what do they pay out? And I think this is, uh, important. So just so that we can see along the top, the gate and the transportation were costs for, uh, were the, um, actual, uh, gate and transportation, um, numbers from 2018, 2019. And then the official column is what would happen if we were charged, uh, the rate at, at the 2020, '21 that, that is allowable? So, uh, as you look, you're going to see some high, high numbers on the right-hand column for some schools. We look at Astronaut High School, their gate in 2018, '19 was $78,000. Uh, you know, if we had the cost for officials, um, that year, if we had, this year would be about $43,000 with transportation at the $10,000, uh, which leaves them a running budget for their whole athletic program at about $25,000. So I wanted to just take a look at this page. We, we have all of the high schools and all of the middle schools listed, but I think what's really important there is to understand the running of the entire athletic program. So, Bill, can you jump in and just talk about, you know, some of the expenses, because it's, it is expensive to run an athletic program, and there are some reoccurring costs, like painting a, a football field that could cost up to $3,000 a year, to some, uh, you know, uh, costs that only have to be paid out every five years, like replacing netting or something like that. So, Bill, you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, I appreciate that, Ms. Moore. Um, like Ms. Moore said, you know, it's kind of like a, a science project. There's so... There's so many variables, and she's exactly right. When you look at the difference even between 2018 and 2019, the $30,000 difference in total fees, you know, when you break that down by 16 high schools, that's only $2,000 per school. And again, a lot of it has to do with whether they want to play their full allotment of home games or total games, and then to make the playoffs. When we came up with these numbers for officials, probably a low-ball number to add to a regular season is around 10%. And the reason I say that is, if one football team makes the playoffs and it's a home game, well, that's 20% of their home games. If a soccer team plays 25 games and makes the playoffs and plays two games, that's 10%. Plus, officials' fees go up during the district and during the regionals, starting at 12%, going up to 28% as they go. Some of the things that Ms. Moore did mention, just to think about, one high school reported that girls' soccer had four playoff games, and they were all away. Couple of them were across the other side of the state, and that was an extra $4,000 in transportation just for that one team. Every high school pays to play in conference and district tournaments, and they total about $1,500 per school per year. One school reported that security for football and basketball games alone through the playoffs was an extra $4,000.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah?
Bill, I'm going to jump in there. I think it's important to recognize that although one school was reporting that, all schools do pay their local municipalities to provide security at certain events, including all football games, many basketball games, and just depending on, you know, what the rivalry and what the expectation of the crowd is going to be. So, that is a very common expense. Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of other big expenses, again, surrounding football. Each year, football equipment needs to be reconditioned, helmets and pads, and that could run around $4,500 per year. And then, every couple of years, some of those need to be replaced because you can only recondition them for so many years, and that's another $3,500 that schools could be paying every couple of years. Paint, just for one year, to paint our football fields runs around $3,000. One baseball team had to do one year where they had to buy equipment, and this is one of those things where you don't have to do it every year, but one year just for uniforms, balls, equipment, and field maintenance for one high school baseball team was $15,000. Same thing for one year at a soccer team was $13,000. Some things we don't even think of. One high school, for one year allotment of baseballs is between $1,000 and $1,200. One school reported that balls for just four different sports, $2,600. So, those are some things. When you look at that remaining to run an athletic program, what I like to do, especially when I talk math, is to break it down into small numbers so that maybe it's even easier for me to grasp. When you divide those numbers on the right-hand column by 23 sports, even Astronaut, that shows $25,000 left to run their athletic programs, that's still only $1,000, $1,200 per sport. When you look at that first screen of just our first eight out of 16 high schools, you'll notice that Cocoa Beach and Edgewood, after just those two expenses, are already in the red, and Bayside is pretty close with just $1,700. And one thing, too, you have to remember, when we talk about gate, the difference between gate in 2018 and 2019 was $190,000. So, that's something that can fluctuate, and as the previous presentation alluded to, we can only go by past history. But again, in one year, under normal circumstances, without what we're going through now, because a lot has changed since our first presentation in February, gate can change by $100,000. So, those are just some things to point out on that first slide of the first eight high schools that we've got on there.
Ms. Belford, can I ask Mr. Mahers a question, please?
Of course, Mr. Susan.
Thank you. Mr. Mahers, when we do the athletic equity, I think it's, is it even among all schools?
No, right now, what we do is, and that's a good point, Mr. Susan, is that was a $200,000 per year that actually runs out this year. And so, what we've done is we've divided that among like schools. So, out of the $200,000, the middle schools get $800. Cocoa Beach, Space Coast get $12,600, and then the rest of the schools get $11,800. Again, based on who has middle school sports, like the five junior seniors, the choice schools, there's four sports they do not have that have officials, and then you've got nine out of 16 schools that have lacrosse. So, it's not quite even, but hopefully, it's equitable based on the officials' fees that they pay.
No, and I agree with you 100%. Thank you so much. There's something that I'll bring up later in the meeting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, part of the reason why these next three slides were put in here, and I'll go ahead to the next slide so you can see that, was to just emphasize the point that some of the questions revolved around fundraising and school-based fundraising, and we'll talk more about that later. But in order to make an athletic program work at all, there has to be an enormous amount of fundraising that's going on anyway. So, this is kind of the next series of slides, and then we'll move on to middle schools so you guys can kind of see what the status is, middle school, gate, officials, and transportation. So, since our last presentation, we have the added variable of COVID-19. So, the only thing we know right now is that we are in contract negotiations with the MCOA. I know that Bill has talked to a lot of the athletic directors about some of their concerns with COVID-19 and what's going to happen moving forward. So, Bill, you want to take this slide?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, just go across the top and talk a little bit in depth about those four items that Ms. Moore has listed. As you know, the spring sports were canceled, so that right there was gate revenue, and baseball and softball can bring in some good gate, and we have several teams that make the playoffs, which again is additional gate when they get to that level. So, that was one thing that hurt us this year. You know, I'm probably one of the few people that still gets the sports page, and it seems like every other day I'm already reading about high school and/or colleges looking at what might happen in the fall. And again, as was mentioned in the previous presentation, we have no idea. None of us wants to think that the COVID-19 is still going to be something we have to deal with in the fall. But a friend of mine has a friend that is an official for the Atlantic Cape Coast Conference, and NCAA is even looking at things like moving college football to start in January. So, those are just some things that could happen with fall sports. Some other things are people coming to games. Are they going to feel comfortable going to a football game where there might be 3,000 other people around them? Earlier, we heard, it was mentioned that there's some concern about enrollment possibly dropping and kids going to homeschool. So, this doesn't just affect athletics, we understand that. It affects the academic part of what we're dealing with as well. Community partners, I like to thank, especially growing up here in Bevard, that the biggest backbone of support for our schools, and again, we have tremendous support from all levels of business owners, but also small business owners, the ones that buy the banners, the ones that buy the meals for the teams, et cetera. We also know, we read about and hear on the news, those are the ones getting hurt the most. So, is there going to be that money available, that discretionary funding from our community partners to sponsor our schools like they have done in the past? And the last thing is fundraising, again, just like Ms. Moore mentioned. Are we going to have people wanting to get their car washed for $5 or $10? Is that something that's going to be in their budget to do? Are they going to buy the magazines with all the coupons? They're going to give us $5 when they come out of Publix at a bucket drop? And as Ms. Moore mentioned, there was some questions about what type of fundraising do we do? And golf tournaments, banners, discount cards, dances, car washes, different things like that, GoFundMe accounts, fan cloth where people can go on and buy their high school apparel. So, what is the effect going to be on fundraising with the unfortunate financial discomfort that people are going through currently? We just don't know. I'm not too excited to think that it's going to be the same or be increased. So, those are just some things that border on, you know, what could happen from here, and that is one slide we did not have to worry about in February, but now it's having a big impact. And as Ms. Moore said, I also, about every two weeks, now it's about every week, I'm on a Skype call with about 25 other county athletic directors around the state, and I believe one gentleman pointed out that the 25 of us represent about 70% of the high schools in the state, and hats off to the FHSAA because they participate with us as well. They're going through the same growing pains. Some of them are talking about several million dollars that their districts are going to lose, and where do we fall in line with athletics and an increase on our side? So, it's something that we're feeling across the state, and we just wanted to share that information with you.
So, in addition to the increase in officiating fees, we also, there's some pending legislation. I last spoke to Bill, he thinks it's sitting waiting to be signed, and it is for the requirement to make available cooling zone at all athletic events. In looking at what that would cost our schools, if we have two full units at each school, it's about $750. And if the district funded that, that would be a total of about $12,000. So, we spoke back in February about all kinds of different options that we could consider, and I think that in order to get through this year, we're going to need to consider multiple options. And I think it's going to require some flexibility on the part of our schools. I think it's going to require some decision-making and judgment on part of our schools, and I think it's going to require us to do a little bit at the district as well. So, these were just some of the considerations that we thought of, but this is really what our recommendation is at this time. If you remember back in February, we actually were asking for a larger increase in gate. You know, we got the feeling like that might not be the direction that everybody wanted to go in, there was some concern there. Bill's done some work looking at what's happened over time across other districts to see what their gate looks like and whether we were in line with other districts, and found that varsity football was pretty online. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Bill?
Yes, ma'am. What I looked at was, I surveyed, which another is a great reason to collaborate with these other athletic directors, 14 other districts that are included in the large district category as we are, and then the surrounding districts too, because we play a lot of games against those individuals. So, for football, we're pretty much in line. Everybody's around that $6, $7 reserve mark. What stood out was that there was only, first of all, there was no district out of the 14 that had their adult prices for all other sports less than $5. And there was only one district out of those other 13 that was at $2. Everybody else was $3. So, basically, that $5 and $3 amount, which is a dollar for each all other sports than football, gets us in line, no more than the surrounding counties. But again, as a reminder, those numbers that I have down at the bottom, just kind of based on what our gate was a couple of years ago, and how many adult tickets those may have been, and how many student tickets, that's based on past information. Again, not knowing what gate it looked like this year as far as with the COVID-19, and maybe people be a little bit nervous about being around from others. But that $5, $3 puts us in line with those other 13 districts.
And so, one of the things we know for sure is that raising those athletic expenses alone isn't going to close the gap between, you know, what we've paid in officials in the past and what we will need to pay once we renegotiate this contract, again, if it's at the highest rate possible. But we actually have a really good relationship with the MCOA, and they understand the position we're in as well. So, we're actually hoping for a good negotiation with them.
Ms. Moore, can I have a quick question?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Actually, probably of Mr. Mahers, although you may be able to answer it. In the discussion with the other athletic directors from the other district, are any of them having discussions about increasing their gate fees this year in response to the increase in official fees?
That's a great question. There were a couple that were. I think for the most part, most of us know that there's not going to be any additional money coming from the school budgets because we understand, and as passionate as I am, and the 8,000 students we have and 700 coaches about sports, we understand the situation that we're in and looking to be in, unfortunately. But there were a couple that had increased by like a dollar or so, and I think they did the same thing that we did. They looked at some of their surrounding counties. But as we'll get to, I think we went past that slide already, you know, they're looking at cutting games, you know, reducing, you know, the one thing the FHSAA does is they have a minimum number of games teams can play and still be eligible for the playoffs. But as we all know, all those other options hurt kids, but there were a few that did look at raising their gate because they had no other options to bring in any money to help fund just this increase or status quo with what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Ms. Belford, may, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the issues, if we were going to discuss a lot of those options that were back on the table from previous, those, I think there were six or a couple of options that were up there. Yeah, there we go. One of the issues by reducing the number of JV and varsity contests not only hurts the kids, but I also think what it does is it also reduces the gate revenue, which we see as one of the biggest outcomes for all of our revenue for our schools. I do know that, I was looking at these, and if I could speak to them just for a second because it seems like we moved past them and we were going to go further down. If you delete freshman athletics, if I'm correct, there's only a handful of actual sports that actually are in freshman athletics. It's like freshman basketball, and then I think volleyball are the only ones that actually have the freshman programs, and the cost of running those, as opposed to the gate revenue that comes in, is almost revenue neutral. And there's just a couple of these. Mr. Mahers, I know you're cut between a rock and a hard place. You're trying to squeeze blood from a stone, and there's no opportunities to do so. A lot of what you're seeing here are opportunities to save in just a little bit, but not as much as needed to fill the donut hole. I applaud your effort in what you're trying to do. I just think that us as a school district need to understand that a lot of these are just hedging $1,000 here, $5,000 there, when in actuality, the donut hole is much bigger. Mr. Mahers, do we have a plan that if the MCOA decides to come in and make it a, that next year they are going to charge us more money for those gate contests, do we have a plan to fund the donut hole that's going to occur?
So, those are great questions. Let me go back to something you alluded to, and I told Ms. Moore, if I go back in the classroom, I will not continue to be a math teacher because I put these numbers so much. I looked at, and again, we're dealing with just a set number of games, the maximum number of games. And as you remember, up till about eight years ago, seven, six, seven years ago, we had freshman football, and then that went away. So, now we have sub-varsity. We have freshman volleyball, just like you said, and we have freshman boys' basketball. If we took out all freshman games, that would save about $32,000, which again, when you're looking at $660,000, it's a drop in the bucket. But like you just mentioned, the biggest impact is, that's a loss of 250 games our kids can't participate in. I also looked at JV, and again, you know, when we reduce number of games or number of officials, you know, now we're getting the safety factors, et cetera. But if we reduced the number of JV contests by half, that could save us about $85,000, and that's a loss of over 500 games. So, to answer your second question, you know, again, the MCOA's been around since the '60s. We're very fortunate to have them, and we also deal with the FLOA out of Orlando that does boys' lacrosse. It's going to be, you know, what are our schools from those other two charts that you just saw where some schools are already in the red just on those two expenses alone? You know, and we can kind of figure out what it looks like per game, per sport, per year that I put into a spreadsheet, and then just meet with the committee, some of the schools say, hey, this is what they're looking to do, they're willing to do this possibly, this would be an X amount. What are your plans?
Bill, I'm going to jump in here for a second. So, the question was, do we have a plan? And so, this is our plan. Our plan is that we're able to raise ticket fees, and we're able to provide our schools some flexibility to look at other options. As you can see from this slide, schools are in very different places, and you know, what's good for one is not good for all in terms of every single sport in every single school because they are in different places with the money they're able to bring in, with the money they're able to fundraise, with the, even the ability to put teams, you know, on the quarter, on the field. to put teams, you know, on the quarter, on the field sometimes with the number of athletes they have wanting to participate. And so the all or none kind of mentality is not going to help in this situation. I think working with individual schools to look at, you know, here are all the options that can help you, and work with them individually, the athletic directors individually, to see what gap we're closing there. I think Bill alluded to the fact that, you know, if we are, not alluded, I think he said, if we're charged at, you know, the maximum amount for the officials, and we divide it amongst 16 high schools, you're looking at, I think he said, $2,300 gap there. Is that what you said, Bill?
A gap as far as like what they pay now might pay next year?
Yeah.
So, and actually, Bayside came out with about the same numbers that I did. Last year, 2018, 19, they paid $29,000.
No, that's, no, that's not what I'm asking. So the difference between the amount, this amount right here, and what we currently, the difference between the rise in gates and the increase of official fees divided by the number of schools, and I thought you had already stated that amount was about $2,300.
No, I don't think so.
Well, we'll get, hey, we'll get that to you, because that's really what you're asking, is what is left over? And, oops, let me get down to the correct slide. And that's when we have to work on the flexibility for schools to make some decision making on what's best for their program.
Correct. And again, just looking at some of those other things, you know, scheduling less games out of town is transportation, scheduling less home games, which who wants to do that? Because everybody wants to see their child play, saves on officials and security. But again, everything hurts kids that was on that chart.
Mr. Mahers, if I may speak real quick. One of the issues with reducing the games is reducing the actual, the revenue that comes in from those gates. The other thing is, is that I know from personal experience, being a coach, and you do too, that a lot of these schools that are, that say that they're going to go out of state, or they're going to go, you know, out of county, a lot of them are to fund that on their own. They do not, they do not, they have to fundraise for it, and you have to be a pretty good team in order to go take on a team that's going to be in another area. And there's a reason behind that. I think that when we take that away, they're not, they're not saying we're going out of state, so we want more money. They actually fundraise for those things.
Absolutely.
And I think that's for the betterment of the school. The question that I was going to have, if we could go back to those slides that show the different gates from the different schools, I wanted to bring up some of this equitization that we were giving. One of the issues that I have is, is that each one of the schools, whether they raise $100,000, or they raise $50,000, is receiving the same amount of money. And I think that when I was doing the numbers, I was, you know, you're trying to look at creating an athletic budget that is a fraction of what another one might be. And when we were doing some of the equitization before, I ran into the fact that I said to myself, oh, wow, I think this is going to be a good thing, because it's going to help a lot of our programs. But in essence, it's actually helping some, but in others, it's padding their budget. And I think that one of the things that I might recommend, and I can't speak because I'm only one board member among all of them, but when we're speaking to equitization, the feeling of equal is not just supposed to be meant for the allocation that is given out, but to equalize all of our sports program. And what I mean by that is, is that if you take a look at Titusville, they get $56,000. Rockledge gets $99,000. But they both receive the same amount of money out of that fund. So if we were to continue like something like that in the future, I would like to see that there is a basic budget that we attest to. And what I did was I went ahead and said that if we said that we would fund every budget past their gate and everything to 75,000, that would mean that the majority of schools that are inside of our program, that don't receive the money that they need to survive their budget, would be able to get it, and there would be money left over in the fund. That's all. I just wanted everybody to understand that when we're giving a flat rate to every school, it's kind of unfair, because each school already receives more money than other schools. So it's actually creating an inequity when we do it. So that's all. Just something to think about for the future. I know that that was funding that was coming out before. Is there any, are we extending that funding again, or is that going to be off the table?
Well, let's go ahead and keep going with our recommendations, because we're going to, we're going to absolutely get to that, and then we can have more discussion if that works for you.
Beautiful, Ms. Moore, thank you.
You know, I just have one thing to add on to what Mr. Susan was just saying. We also aren't accounting for, like, for Pompe High, for example, you can look at their numbers, but then they have the arrangement with FIT, so that, you know, that makes it very not equitable once you get, you know, stuck reading in that. I don't know if we track all of that with all the different schools and their parts of it.
Thank you, yeah. And that's part of why, and I wasn't, I'm going to speak from what I remember as a principal, as opposed to my current position. It, when we brought back the money to, that the district pays, gives to the schools to offset some athletic expenses, it wasn't brought back as equalization money, because there just was inequities throughout, even based on donations and monetary donations that parents can give in some schools that just can't be given in other schools. And so that's why it came back just as an athletic incentive, an athletic enhancement, not as an equalization fund, because there was no way to really equalize the amounts that different schools can bring in. We can, we can monitor gate, but you're right, Pompe is a great example of that. You know, there's another school on there that I know received a $10,000 donation for a baseball team. That doesn't happen at every school. It certainly didn't happen at any of the schools I worked at. So I think that's important to keep in mind. Thank you, Ms. Duskovich.
Ms. Moore, just for point of, point of, you know, I just wanted to let you know that the equalization fund used to be that way.
It did, yes.
Where it was based upon not a flat rate to every school, but it was based upon bringing certain schools up that were not, that were not receiving the amount of funding they were. That's all. Thank you. It wasn't an idea that I came up with, it was one that was in the past, that's all.
Yeah, that, yes. I don't know when it went away. It was in place for a while, and it was, it was labeled equalization funds, and then it was a budget cut, and then it came back. And when it came back, the group that was in charge of it looked over all of the factors and said, there's just no way for it to be equalization money. So it became enhancement money at that point. So our recommendation, our first recommendation is to raise other sport ticket prices, adult admissions from four to five, student admission from two to three. Our next recommendation is to maintain the current level of board athletic assistance. So as you can see, just in terms of, there are some schools that are already in the red when we're just talking about transportation and official costs. And when you look at the overall, what it takes to run an athletic program, many of the schools depend on that assistance plus fundraising on their own to maintain their athletic program. That's our second one. Our last one is that we do, would like to ask the board to raise its contribution to each high school for the 2021 school year only by $750 to pay for the pending legislation, HB 7011. That'd be a total ask of $12,000 increase in board assistance to athletic programs. Another factor that we have to consider and that we spoke about was we are renewing the bowling contract. I know that Bill's been up to his eyebrows in these discussions. So Bill, I'm going to let you take this one away. Go ahead.
Sure. As we discussed the last time, the bowling, their initial contract for 10 years ended in 1920, and they have paid all the expenses during that time. Here's a breakdown of the supplements that have stayed pretty stationary. I think you'll see that little increase there for 18, 19, is because we've got a lot of coaches that have been there the whole 10 years, so they've moved into that second lane as per the BFT contract. So, you know, what they've initially asked, and we're still working with them, is that the district takes over supplements, and then they also asked that in year four of a new five-year contract, the schools start paying for facility use of 725, kind of like we do for swimming. Right now, with the nine schools that have to pay a fee to use pools, the district covers those. So those are some of the things that, again, we're working with them, that they've asked, and to continue as we get ready to, with them, like the MCOA, do a new contract.
So as we look at the information that was presented in the workshop previous, and we're looking at the budget, we're looking at just having to watch every penny, it is not our recommendation at this time that we fund bowling supplements, the $232,000 a year. So what we're asking is to move to the model that lacrosse is using, which is a pay-to-participate model with scholarships as they're able to be generated, or continuing to work with the proprietors to see if they can continue to support financially that function, because adding $32,000 to our budget this year is, it's not our recommendation in light of the other budget cuts that are going to need to be made. But we are going to ask that we put the $725 for the facility use fees for each of the high schools. And I know, Bill, you did the math, because I saw it really quickly, but do you remember that total?
Yes, ma'am. It was $11,600, which currently we're paying around $13,000 a year for the nine schools that are using pools. But the 725, and both myself and one of the other proprietors reached out to other counties, and they're charging between $750 and $1,200 per school to bowl at their facilities. So that 725, again, almost like what it was for the tub and thermometer, so about $11,600 per year.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, can I speak, can I ask a question on the lacrosse? You guys are making a recommendation to move towards pay to play, and I just wanted an opportunity, once this is over, to talk to you about that. That's all.
Yeah, so we're there, we're in the discussion part. So please, take it away.
All right. So, Mr. Mahers, can you tell me which schools actually participate in lacrosse currently?
I didn't realize you were going to give me a test today, Mr. Susan. So let me see if I can get this. So we got West Shore, Edgewood, Satellite, Oak Alley, Merritt Island, Melbourne, Rockledge, I'm missing two.
That's okay. That's, I mean, that's, that's good enough. And in our schools that are the ones that are difficult to, you know, some of our other areas that we have, what are the reasons behind them not having lacrosse teams? Is it because it's a pay to play? Or do you think it's the interest within the community? What do you find that that is the reason behind that, that issue?
The biggest thing is interest. I think in the four years I've been in this position, I've had two schools that have kind of questioned, because they've had one or two kids come up to them and ask. But again, it has to do with interest. And just to take a minute to talk about that, they're, they've only got one more year for their contract, so next year we'll be working with them. So right now, the kids pay $250, just like Ms. Moore said, and I can just go back to the five, six, seven years I coached at Satellite. We did a lot of fundraising. There was never a kid that I'm aware of that did not get to play, because they couldn't afford that, because we would help them fundraise. And the FBL, the Friends of Bavard Lacrosse, do a great job as far as using scholarships, et cetera. So, you know, that's just something like Ms. Moore said, as we continue to talk to the proprietors, based on what they say they can and can't continue to do, if there's no influx of district money, then that's, the next option is kids kind of paying to participate. So that's, that's just an option on the table as we continue to work with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mahers. I appreciate it, because that was a concern of mine, was that some of the schools that may not be able to pay to play aren't able to, but I'm hearing you say differently, so that makes me feel good. And let me ask you, the next question is, is that, do you feel, I don't know how to word this right, but is the level of participation in bowling going to drop because we're going to force, do you feel that the level of participation in bowling will drop because we're going to make them go to pay to play? Or do you think that it will continue to be the same? I just, and the reason I ask on this subject is because of what happened last year, which was an anomaly to me that I didn't even know, that the most watched sporting event in our entire county was bowling, which made it to be, that this is something that seems to be a hot issue for our students and our athletes and everybody else. I thought it would ask the question, do you think it'll drop overall membership because we have to go to that? Or do you think that this will continue because the interest is there?
So I can't really put my finger on a pulse that can give you an exact answer, but from conversations that I've had with the bowling proprietors and some of the coaches, you're right, it is a sport that, you know, the last, I think, 10 years, we've had at least 14 team and/or individual state champions. So Bavard's put itself on the map when it comes to bowling, not even looking at kids that have gone on to scholarships. You know what, I think it depends on the amount. You know, if I was still playing a sport, which was, you know, back too many years I want to admit, you know, and like lacrosse, we couple that with fundraising. So like when my daughter played lacrosse, okay, Dad, if you help out at the car wash, you know, takes 50 bucks off my $250. And as most parents, those first three years, I'm washing every car at Satellite Beach. That fourth year, I'm writing a check, because I'm done with car washes. But I think it just depends on what that number might look like, depending on our negotiations. I do know that the bowling proprietors felt, just because of what they've done the last 10 years with these schools and coaches, that, you know, even if schools got no assistance with that facility, facility use fee of 725, that they could probably fundraise that pretty quickly. So I think we've got some great coaches and schools out there, depending on what that number is, that, you know, I'm just going to say 100 bucks, just to throw a number out there. You want to pay 100 bucks and play, or not pay 100 bucks and not play? And then they fundraise, because again, I think most sports fundraise to help offset any cost that students have to play. So I like to think not, and we certainly don't want that to be a result.
Thank you, Bill. Can I ask-
Mr. Susan, if I could just chime in for just one second. If you're looking at the cost that it would be for the stipend, what if, they're not called stipend, so what are they?
Supplements.
Supplements, thank you. You're looking at, if all 16 schools had a bowling team, and we are looking at $36,000 worth of supplements, we're looking at a contribution per school of $2,300. So between fundraising and whatever is determined to be the pay to participate amount, it is, it is within, it is within, as well as we're able to do.
I truly believe that, and thank you for that. The real quick question that I was going to ask is, how is it, when we are determining that facility use agreement, are we putting in that we are able to sell banners and stuff during our actual games in their facilities? Because that may be a revenue area that we might want to be able to give to our students, that when they are playing or bowling, I apologize, at the different facilities, how they may be able to sell advertising, which is a whole other area that we know we were going through an RFI or an RFQ about raising some, you know, bringing in somebody to go out and get advertising for our different athletic facilities that would go back into it, which this would be a perfect example. Are you in any of, any discussions with those groups about when they utilize their fields, what if we are trying to sell advertisements, what that would do? Or is that just something we're not, we're not interested in doing?
No, I think that's a great question, and certainly a venue we can look at. I know when I've gone to some of the bowling matches, you know, they don't use every lane, of course, but some of those monitors that would normally show a score will have an advertisement on it. I can honestly say if that's something that the schools have initiated, or maybe the bowling proprietors themselves to try to offset some of this annual fees that they pay. So I think it's actually doable. We just need to have a discussion with them as far as, you know, who can do that and who can't, based on who's going to be footing the bill the next few years.
Thank you so much, Bill. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So just to, so is there any further discussion or questions about our recommendation for increasing all other sports ticket prices by a dollar?
Hi, it's Tina. I know the last discussion, I really, really disliked increasing the sports admission, because I just remember last year, all the basketball games, sometimes three a week, and if all four of us wanted to go, how expensive that started getting. But I also see and understand the need, and I think of all the options, that's the best one for us. So you have my support on the recommendations, Chris.
Thank you.
Ms. McDougal, would you like to weigh in on the recommendations?
I am so sorry, I hit the wrong button. I support this too. And in talking with some of my athletic directors, they talked about some creative ideas about, do we, can people pay by charge card or have a season pass? Is that something that- Is that something that would be helpful or not helpful?
I, I could address that, you know, the, the, the season pass, we've talked about before, um, but currently, that is tied to the Internal Accounts Manual, and per the Internal Accounts Manual, you cannot sell a season pass, say to basketball, like Ms. Duskovich said, that would be more than a ten percent discount. And let's face it, just to, for somebody to buy a season pass and only save ten percent, and then all of a sudden, they don't go to one or two games, um, they're gonna lose money. So that, a lot of counties do that, and a lot of them actually do it, um, there are some counties that will collect the fee at the beginning of the year, fifty, sixty, seventy-five dollars per student, and so that gives them money to initiate the school year with, and those kids go to those games for, for no cost, because they paid that seventy-five dollars. I think the fear, when, when I brought this up before, a couple of years ago, and, and it's true, that if kids go to every single game, the district's gonna lose money. That's exactly right. I think, I don't have it in front of me, I think I figured that if a young man or woman went to every varsity game alone, it'd be about three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. I, I don't think that's gonna happen, and I'm talking with the counties, I feel pretty confident that if that did, they would not continue each year to do that. So, so right now, we're tied to that policy and to internal accounts. As far as credit cards, uh, you're exactly right, there is a company out there that works with the F A, there's a lot of companies, actually, but there is one that works out there with the F H S A. A. Some of you may know, if you've been to any postseason games, the F H S A. A., you can buy your ticket online, pops up on your phone, you go to the gate, they hit yes, you get in. Um, I've actually used that when my son was visiting from England, and we went to a couple playoff games, works like a charm, they get their money in about three or four days, but we just haven't taken that step yet through, probably need to get with accounting and, and, um, E T. department to, to figure all that out. But those options are out there, um, we just need to move forward, maybe come up with a plan to see if we can get those approved.
Hey, I'm sorry, guys, I was kicked, I was kicked off, somebody kicked me off.
So hopefully I answered your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maharris. Ms. Campbell, do you wanna weigh in on the recommendations?
Um, sure, thank you. I, um, appreciate the changes that you guys have made, considering, you know, what we have talked about earlier today. I am good with the, um, increase of the gate admission for the other sports. Um, and I think, um, you know, for us to be able to jump in there with those one-time expenses, um, especially the, you know, the legislative mandates, and then the bowling use fees, I, I appreciate your, your ongoing conversations with them. I, honestly, I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it all, I just say I was really fascinated by the slides comparing all the schools, because I was trying to find a pattern, and I couldn't find it, except that the schools with the long-running history, you know, a newer school, for example, like Heritage, that doesn't have their tradition that, say, a cocoa has, you know, things like that, I was trying to, is it our more affluent areas? Is it our bigger schools? And it's just not, it's, it's really the popularity of sports, it looks like, and so, um, I just appreciate you guys trying to find a way to, to make this work. So I'm, I'm good with the recommendations that's presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan, would you like to weigh in on the recommendations?
Sure, yes, I just, uh, definitely support the recommendations. Um, also, the season tickets, um, I think it's kinda counterproductive when every single major sports organization in, in the country actually sells season tickets, there's a reason for that. Um, so there's, I don't think that the fear is justified by actual data. Um, so I would say that, you know, going towards a higher percentage on the, the season, or going towards the season tickets is awesome. Um, also, one thing that I'd love to put in there is, is that we have been talking about advertising and having somebody help these schools with that advertising to offset some of these costs, and I know that they do a great job on their local boosters and everything like that, but there is a different level that can be brought, and I'm really looking forward to that piece coming in that we discussed so much last year. Um, and then also, uh, the, Ms. Campbell, one of the issues that I think you touched on, as far as the gate goes, um, they follow champions, and when Rockledge is going into the state playoffs, and so is, uh, cocoa, or there's a good game between the two of them, the entire school, everybody comes out. So one of the issues that we have is, is that, you know, some of these football programs, which is driving a lot of that, and basketball and some of the other ones, um, follows those individuals, and I think that it's unfair that some of the schools that are out there may not make the same gate that those do, and like such, they're making different decisions because of it. So, thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I say yes on the recommendation, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Um, for myself, uh, I support the recommendations, I thank you for the work that you have put into it. Um, I do think if there's a credit card solution, that, that is something that we need to move forward. Um, I, I think that would be, um, you know, I, I would love to just go online and, and pay for my kids to be able to go to the game and not have to stop at the bank and get cash and all of that fun stuff, so, um, I, I think that would, would help things as far as participation as well. Um, so you have my support for the recommendations and my thanks. I do have one, uh, request for follow-up, and that is, if it is possible to identify the total security costs that we're paying in the district for supportive athletic events, um, and I don't expect that you have it now, or, you know, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but if at some point that information is available, I would love to see what we are paying for that.
Yeah, we can get you that, and then there's, um, there's, you want us to include activities as well, because we typically pay for, um, to be at our dances, and even at some of, at some of our events before we take a longer field trip. So do you want it all encompassing?
I would love it if you have it all encompassing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Belk, could I just jump on the tail end of your discussion, what you were talking about with the security? So if I'm understanding correctly, our current S R Os, they don't, we pay them extra to go to these events?
Well, it might not be, uh, S R Os, uh, only because they, you know, they have to work within their union and their contract, um, but we do pay law enforcement officers above and beyond our security contract to be at our games and our dances, yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Ms. McDougal, they also, they also pay administrators and ticket takers and, and, um, and any staff that actually works the event.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we do not pay administrators to be at those events. Um, uh, ticket takers, we do, uh, you know, depending on whether we can get volunteers to do tickets, that's, that's always our first option, is to try to get volunteers, but yes, we do have ticket takers that, um, we do end up having to pay for some events if we can't get volunteers. Administrators, it's part of their job, it's part of the reason they earn, uh, uh, admin time, is because they do have to work so many evening events.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Moore. Um, board members, any additional comments or questions before we wrap up? We are at four-twenty, and, uh, as you know, our board meeting starts at five-thirty, so, um, if there's, if there's any questions or comments, let's get them out there now.
I just wanna say thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Well, thank you, guys, um, and I hope everybody is doing well, I should've started with that, but, uh, I appreciate the support, and Bill's worked really hard on this, so I thank him for all of his hard work. We'll move forward, um, I, I have three takeaways. Number one, we're gonna review what's currently going on in the district with a, a credit card solution, and if that can be extended to athletics. We're gonna look at the possibility and feasibility of season tickets, and we're gonna provide some information about, um, the cost of security athletics at athletic and other activities. Did I miss anything?
Yes, just follow up on that, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I was just gonna say, I think the only additional thing is the, uh, athletic equal, equalization compared to athletic assistance, um, and I, I know that's a challenging one, so, um...
And also follow up where that advertising is for the, the school district's, um, athletic facilities. Thank you.
Um, I, I'm gonna, um, we're gonna, okay, I'm gonna, first off, I'm gonna make a complete sentence out of my mutterings, um, we're gonna have to work with government and community relations a little bit, because they own a good chunk of that. Um, so, just so that I can get some insight about what direction to go, are you looking at what currently we, we have coming in, in terms of athletic advertising or funding at our fields, and then a solution for increasing that, because that would be part of government and community relations?
So what, so what I'm looking at is, is part of what we see here is a lot of costs, and one of the solutions that we came to last year was we had an advertising, um, R F I. R F Q. that was going out to a company to come in to sell, and, and how, how that's coming and what the plan is, because I think that when we're talking about, you know, ten-thousand, twenty-thousand, thirty-thousand dollars here, there's some large money in some of these, you know, at possible advertisements that go on, and that needed to be part of the conversation that wasn't here, so I was just looking to get an update on how that is.
Got it, yeah, that wasn't from us, that was government and community relations, but we'll circle back around to them.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, thank you, Mr. Maharris, thank you, Ms. Lusinski, and thank you to all of the staff that worked to make sure that we were functioning technologically today, uh, unless there are any further questions, going once, going twice. All right, then we will officially adjourn the workshop, and we will see you all at five-thirty for the board meeting. Thank you.